We're live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the University City City Council to order Monday, April 28th at 6:30 6pm. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Teeman.
Present.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Brenner.
Present.
Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Smotherson.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here. Before you, you have the agenda during the study session. We ask if anyone had any changes. There were none at that time. Are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Teeman, seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Before you have the proclamation for Arbor Day, all the members of council will sign this prior to the conclusion of the meeting this evening. You have before you the March 10th, 2025 study session minutes for parking meters update. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You have before the March 24th, 2025 regular session minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Brenner. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Well, now you yield the floor to Ms. Brenner. You have three appointments.
Honorable Mayor and council, I would like to start by nominating Michael Forte for a reappointment to the pension board.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Teeman. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Brenner.
Okay, and next I would like to nominate Shannon McDonald to the pension board.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilmember Brenner.
Okay, and last, I would like to nominate Diane Lindsay for appointment to the senior commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Teeman. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no swearings in. We have, this section is for citizen participation. For those of you who may not know, you can sign up to speak over by the door. There are signup sheets. If you'd like to speak on an agenda item, your name will be called when that agenda item is called. If you'd like to speak on non-agenda items, there are two separate times when you can come to speak. When you come to the microphone, please give your name and address, and then your comments are limited to five minutes. It is not a give and take. It is normally your comments are given, and then someone from staff will get back to you. I believe we have three requests to speak at this juncture. The first request to speak is Diane Jackson. There's a green button, there's a button at the bottom. If you'll hit it, the microphone will turn green light on, and you may want to pull that a little closer to you. There you go.
Okay, okay. I'm Diane Jackson. I live at 6836 Crest, and I was here last month about the sweet gum tree and the other tree that I felt like was dead that they kept saying it wasn't. I just wanted to come here and say thank everyone, especially Mr. Smotherson, Jacob Kaiser, and Mr. Darren. They worked with me, and they got those trees down for me, and I'm so, so happy. So I just wanted to come here and say thank you to everybody.
Well, we don't get those very often. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next request to speak is James Tucker.
Good evening, honorable city council members. Good evening, honorable city council members, mayor and city manager. My name is James Tucker. My address is 3321 Fairway Drive. I am president of ART 2063. I'm also an educator, and I'm a retired veteran. This afternoon, I'd like to share with you information about our upcoming Juneteenth Caribbean Heritage Festival. The theme this year is keeping our history alive. We were met with the West Loop Business District. They voted to approve this event. We've also been working with University City staff. And of course, we definitely need to support a university city in order to make this event successful. This event will be hosted in the parking lot next to the Tibbely. I would like to give you just some brief history about my involvement in Juneteenth. I, while I was serving the Gulf War in 1991, I met a major who was a combat surgeon. He introduced me to another doctor in Mississippi by the name of Dr. Ron Myers. And they started what you call a modern day Juneteenth movement. And that movement is the reason why Juneteenth is a national holiday today. So I've been involved over 35 years, and of course, our goal is to keep history alive in the United States of America. The modern day Juneteenth moment, once again, is the reason why Juneteenth is a national holiday today. That is so important to, for me, and that leads to my next point. One of our goals in hosting this event is to educate citizens about Juneteenth. What does that mean? It means that we share information about the constitutional amendments, the 13th amendment, 14th amendments to the constitution. And I can't think of a better time for us to educate citizens about the United States Constitution. And that is basically what we try to do through our event in terms of, you know, educating the people. In addition to that, we work to bring the community together in unity and love. And I might add that I'm a member of probably one of the, I'm not discriminating, but one of the best churches in St. Louis. That's One Family Church. I, I'm not, yeah, it's a very good church, and I've learned a lot, and it's probably one of the best places to, I would encourage all of you to attend, to be honest with you. And we're not talking about that, but I'm going off script a little bit. So once again, is to bring the community together in love and unity. Just briefly, some events will be taking place. We have a walk through history, and that's where we have signs where individuals learn about the history of African Americans and Caribbean. We also have a Missouri History Museum. They'll be participating, so they have, they will have displays there. We have speakers. We have a band playing throughout the day called Razor Shop. We have a children's village. We have vendors, and of course, we also have a food court. I think that's it in a nutshell. Are there any questions? Comments? I appreciate your support in making this event successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. Our next request to speak is Liam Barrick. I hope I said that. I couldn't.
Liam Brick. I know I scribbled out the quickly on there. Resident 1079 Wilson Avenue. My wife and I are grateful for all the support that you guys have provided for FEMA and the buyout process. And we just wanted to kind of provide some more perspective on our current lived experiences that we've had through the FEMA buyout and the repeated trauma that the rains have brought us. We're both very familiar with the impact that trauma is due to our professionals or professions. Myself as a special education teacher and Hannah as a health counsel, mental health counselor. Complex trauma is the repeated prolonged exposure to traumatic experiences. Symptoms, repeated exposure to traumatic events that include difficulty sleeping, concentration, increased irritability, hypervigilance, intrusive recollections, extreme responses, and new negative thinking. And all those things we've experienced pretty regularly over the last two and a half years. Reading about these impacts of the flood and the rains is one thing, but living in it is repeated exposure to these events and stress is another. We do jolt out of bed anytime there is rain that has come through, and we're constantly monitoring the USGS weather gauge and the U City weather gauge and the red alerts. Our job performance is impacted during those rainy days, and we're fearful anytime we leave sound that there would be another catastrophe. The July 22, 2022 flood was one, but the subsequent floods and near flood events have had a significant impact on our mental and physical well-being. We're nearly wet, and we just want to move on with a safe and comfortable home to start a family. We're caregivers for Asian parents right now and also managing autoimmune diseases. We're just one of a dozen families eagerly awaiting this process to move forward, juggling our own health, family responsibilities, and careers while trying to cope with unseen, uncertain future. We're not faceless property owners. We're neighbors, volunteers, essential workers, and community members who invested our lives here. We just respectfully call councils to continue in with the communication with all the affected homeowners. Clear concrete and consistent updates are really essential for us to continue this partnership. We ask for your, we continue to ask for your support as we work to move forward and heal, but we cannot do this alone, unfortunately. With your leadership and commitment to this transparency and efficiency, we can move forward and move on with this process. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I believe that concludes the request to speak at this section. The next item agenda, are there any council comments? At this section? If not, I would actually like to make just some very brief remarks, and then we can move forward. I think that most, I know all of my colleagues on council and the directors know that just a couple of months ago, we lost a very dear resident to us in Ellen Hearts. And I want to take just a moment to speak about Ellen. Ellen, for those of you who may not know, Ellen served on our planning commission and did a great deal of heavy lifting. She married her husband Arthur in 1968, and soon thereafter, they had two daughters, Alyssa and Sarah. We need to thank Sarah because in 2012, Ellen and Arthur moved to University City to be much closer to their grandchildren. One of the things that most people do not know is that Ellen was quite a singer and joined in the sweet Adeline's barbershop choruses in every community that she lived in. We were not the first planning commission that Ellen served on. In fact, she first served on the planning commission in Hummels Town, Pennsylvania, when she and Arthur lived there, and then some 30 years later, she served on ours. And Arthur's comment was, "Where she was devoted to a planning commission that she believed was as close to perfect as government agencies can get." And I think from Ellen to her colleagues on the planning commission who did so much work on the markets at Olive and such long meetings, I think that is a very, very, very true statement. I'd like to conclude my brief remarks by saying some of the words that Arthur put out for her. Ellen's warmth, energy, enthusiasm, fun, and free spirit immediately attracted people to her. Her authenticity, responsibility, social skills, selflessness, and respect for the needs and opinions of others made her a valued friend. Her organizational abilities, competence, positive attitude, and intelligence made her a great colleague. It was an additional feature, however, that put her in a class by herself, her relentless, egoless drive to make others happy. No one did more to assess friends, to assist friends, welcome strangers, or appreciate the contributions of others. Her strongest regret after she became bedridden was not that she couldn't take her beloved hikes in the woods. It was that she would not be able to help her daughter's family with their upcoming move. So on behalf of my colleagues and behalf of the residents of the residents of University City, I'd like to express our appreciation to Arthur and his family for sharing Ellen with us and our sympathies to each and every one of them. You now have before you a public hearing for CBDG reallocation of 2024 funds. It is 6:50. I declare the hearing open. Do we have any requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Do we have any written comments on this matter?
There are none.
Therefore, I will close this hearing at 6:50 for the CBD reallocation of 2024 funds. You have before you on the consent agendas, I have K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Mr. Fuller. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Brenner.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question about K1, about reallocating to the, to Edsel, the project to Edsel. I just wondered, because I know Edsel was one of the walkable streets that the Third Ward Revitalization Plan had, and just wondered if this will support that at all, or if it's completely separate. That was all.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Brenner, I believe this is a separate matter. It's just for improvements along Edsel. But could you speak to the improvements briefly, or have they been identified exactly what's going to occur? I believe, Marilla.
You're on. You are on.
Good evening, Mayor.
Probably need to pull the microphone down.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The question is regarding the location of the CDBG for Edsel, as I'm understanding.
I was just asking whether or not this, this would play into some of the conceptual ideas of improving Edsel's walkability through the Third Ward Revitalization, or if it's completely separate.
This is CDBG funds from Community Grand Development Project and has been evaluated based on the PACE rating. The previous 2023 wasn't qualified because it was located on the flat plain. So this time, we made sure that the location is eligible falling into the flat plain and CDBG map.
Director Katyn, was the, in response to Councilmember Brenner, we did not, the walkability issue was not an influence. It was primarily sidewalks, street repairs that we conduct for all streets that comply with CDBG criteria. The walkability issue is something that we will begin to incorporate at a different time. That's a separate project.
Mr. Smotherson.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. I just have, this is not a question for, for you. It's not at all. This is a different subject, so thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Rose. But what my question is, is, and it's not a question, it's a comment, because what I want to actually just say is under for the consent agenda where we're doing facade improvement, and I just wanted to let my colleagues know that one of the improvements that's been applied for is a fence for Hartman's towing. And I find that interesting because what I would have imagined they would have wanted to improve is just east of where they're talking about putting fencing is, they park and store vehicles in this four-wall building that sits on the corner of Sutter and Olive with no roof. So I just wonder why they're more interested in the fence opposed to improving the building. That's my comment.
Just, and just to my colleague, the EDRST board is aware that they're, is wanting to tighten up the application process on the facade approval program. And so you bring up a very good point, which was noted by other members of the EDRST as well, just so you know. So I appreciate that. Any other questions of Mr. Rose? Or, oh, I apologize, Mr. McMahon.
That's okay. I did have another question on the facade improvement, and I was looking at the repainting of parking lot lines. And I was just wondering if that's shifting towards routine maintenance that I don't think that was supposed to be part of, as opposed to, you know, awnings and the other things that are all listed, but I just noted that one, and I wanted to know if there's any clarification on how we make that distinction between routine maintenance and and a facade improvement.
Correct, and, and we agree, and I think Brooke is sitting in the back, and we know, we know we've got some tightening up to do before the next round of grants. Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, we're not, just so everybody recognizes, a consent agenda is a consent agenda. If you have questions, you'd really need to move things off the consent agenda.
Agreed. Just to follow up to what I said, I think as you develop the Edsel piece, just think about, if you're going to change something, don't, like, don't waste the money on something that we might end up changing. That's all. That was my comment.
Okay, we have before you the consent agenda. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And before now, the city managers' report. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor and council members, this first item, I want to recognize in accordance with Article 3, Section 19, Subsection 2 of the Charter of the City of University City, I am submitting to you the proposed FY 2026 Annual Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for FY 2026 through FY 2030. That document is, should be in front of you on your desk, and a copy has been provided to our city clerk, Larit, as well as it will be placed on the website for the public to see. The next item up under the city manager's report, item L1, we received a question from a resident regarding the status of the driving range. And I believe it was just a good time to update the council on the status of the driving range. So I've asked Parks, Recreation, and Public Maintenance Director Darren Girdler to provide you with an update. Mr. Girdler.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Rose, Madam Clerk. Just a few bullet points on the driving range as of last week and today. Rough grading is being completed. They have hauled a little bit more dirt into the site to balance it better. And they're pushing dirt down the hill so that you can see your ball land at the end of the driving range instead of going over an edge. So there, that's something they're working on. Six inches of topsoil is needed for appropriate establishment of vegetation. There's not six inches of topsoil out there that they scraped off in the beginning. We're not sure how much that's going to cover. But we, they're gonna, they're gonna begin on that as soon as they're done with the, with the, with the more final grading. They'll be spreading that around probably at the top of the area, and then more, more will need to be added towards the bottom. The excavation company that's handling the earth moving and that handled the hauling in of the dirt from the target site is asking for engineering drawings for the finished grading, so to find details on what exactly is going to work. The final engineering drawings are needed to make sure we have proper slope for drainage and no erosion, and so that no erosion will can, will occur again like we had in the past with the large washouts down the, down the range. Irrigation will be needed. Obviously, we'll, we would need basically a choice of three, three things for vegetation, sod, sod, sprigs, or seeding, overseeding or injection seeding at the site. Currently, there are no targets on the range at the different locations, at the different distances like you would typically see. We would also propose to use some of those to catch some water and slow it down to avoid the, the, any erosion that may take place. The entrance road is collapsing. It will need to be addressed unless they're completely done hauling dirt in and out.
Excuse me, Mr. Girdler?
Yes.
Would you like for us to bring forward a chair for you, or are you?
I'm, I'm okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, a little shaky, but I'm good. Thanks. The road, groby old bottom, needs to be swept fairly often because it's quite a mess out there. And even then, it's difficult for them to get up everything that's on that road because it gets run over by those heavy trucks all the time. And, you know, as you know, street sweepers aren't really scrapers. So that's a, it's a real mess. And, you know, heavy rains will, the water would carry the mud or the dirt to these stormin' lets downstream. As of the 24th, a full day's worth of work to continue to knock down and grade the site. They need existing black dirt spread and most likely more brought to the site, need a minimum of six inches, as I had said. And drainage completion is underway by the contractor, which includes repairs to where they, our drainage was quite a bit lower in the beginning. When they, when they raised the site, they buried some of our facilities, but they have to bring those inlets back to the top. So they're, they, they are working on the piping for that. And we have a few more details to hammer out between the city, the excavator, and the developer. And we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks to month. And I would, I would be prepared to, to probably have a final report here shortly. But as of now, that's where we stand.
Do we have a proposed remote timeline for the conclusion of this project?
Not at this time. That's going to depend on budget and who's responsible for what.
Okay. What other question? Mr. Smotherson.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and that was the question that I was going to ask, but since Mr. Girdler stated it depends on the budget, is there anything that the council can do to help in that speeding that process up in regards to the budget? If that can be answered, I'm not sure. Because I'd like to see this get done, and is there something that we can do as a council? Because again, we're handling the budget.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Smotherson, the budget was just, as you know, proposed budget was provided to you. I think that I'll certainly be working with Brooke and with Darren to identify what is the earliest possible opening date. It may not be a perfect driving range, but it's just that a driving range, they're not really playing or scoring there. So I don't, I don't think that we necessarily need to wait until it's a perfect or ideal situation. We'll try to open it up as, as quickly as possible. I think we'll have a better sense in about two weeks as far as, you know, what that opening period will be based upon, you know, again, let's just get it open as, as soon as we can.
Are there other questions of Mr. Girdler? Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, this next item. Honorable Mayor, uh, council members, this next item uh, provides you with an update regarding the Pershing Improvement uh, project. Uh, and we have Deputy City Manager Brooke Sharp to present this item. You may recall that the Pershing project has increased in the amount of funding that is needed to complete it. And so we want to provide you with information into some of the reasons why uh, those increases have been realizes, have been realized. Ms. Sharp?
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, so as stated, I am here to um, correct some information that was previously provided to the council. Uh, this project predated me and I went through all of the paperwork so that I could update you all on um, what was done and where we are in our next steps. So just to provide a little bit of background information, February twenty twenty one, uh, the city applied for funding, um, applied for grant through East West Gateway uh, for Pershing Avenue. So at that time, the proposed budget was one point four eight nine million dollars. Uh, the federal amount requested was one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars with an anticipated cost to the city being three hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. In July twenties, in July of twenty twenty-two, um, after the city had been informed that it received the grant, city council authorized the execution of the program agreement. At that time, the total proposed budget had been reduced to one point three four three, six hundred seventy-three dollars, uh, with the federal amount authorized being one million, one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. And the anticipated cost to the city was two hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars. And the source of the city, city's funds at that time would be the Capital Improvement Fund. Now, in December of twenty twenty-two, the city council approved supplemental agreement number twelve. Uh, this was an agreement with Cochran, who is the um, engineer, the designer on the project. Uh, at this time, the council was informed as well as the city manager, city manager and council were informed that uh, due to a thirty percent increase in construction costs, that um, staff was requesting that the full federal share be allocated to the construction costs and that the city bear the cost for the uh, engineering cost and the acquisition of rights of way. Uh, and I do want to note that at this time, no estimate was provided for the acquisition of rights of way. So at this point, the total project budget increased to one million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred sixty dollars, which was not pointed out to the council at that time. The federal share remains the same because that is the amount of the grant. So it stays at one million, one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which means the city would have to um, take on the cost. So this substantially increase the amount, increase the amount of the city's share to eight hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars. And again, this was not pointed out to either the city manager and you guys that um, the city's share had increased by six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So fast forward to February twenty twenty-five, we received a cost estimate that was reviewed by Director Morella Salash. Um, and she stated that she believed the project was over budget based on the face value of the cost estimate that was presented. So the question from the city manager was why was the project over budget? We asked that question of our engineer Cochran and we were told that there was a change in scope that was, that's why there was an increase. So the question became who authorized the change in scope? Their answer was that supplemental amendment, agreement number twelve authorized the change in scope. Um, I reviewed the document thoroughly, as did our city attorney, and that document did not authorize a change in scope. It presented an increase in cost due to inflation. So at that point, there became a need to dive into this to figure out exactly what happened, what's going on and where we are now. Um, the original application proposed a project that included spot replacement of sidewalk curb and gutters. Um, and the change in scope went for complete replacement of sidewalk curb and cutters, which is what triggered the need to remove the trees along Pershing. As you all recall, that became a very controversial issue that we had to deal with. And the reason we had to remove the trees swiftly is because due to a species of bat that lives in the tree, we can only remove them between the dates of November first and March thirty-first. So we had to rush to go ahead and get the trees down um, without having the full knowledge of what was going on with this issue. Um, and I think today, all the trees have been removed, which means that we really need to proceed with the complete replacement. So when I took this on, the overarching issues to me were who authorized the change in scope? And what is the total amount that the city is responsible for now so that you all can have an accurate number? So who authorized the change in scope? As stated, our engineer stated that supplemental amendment number twelve did. It does not. It simply says that um, there's a thirty percent increase in construction cost due to inflation. Uh, there was a cost estimate that was included with that document, but one of the amounts that are listed on that cost estimate were incorrect. The grant amount was listed at one point three million and it's only one point one. Um, it did show an increase in quantities which could represent a change in scope, but that was never pointed out to the city manager. It was not pointed out to you all. There are no other documents that would authorize a change in scope. Question number two, how much is the city responsible for? So we received the most recent cost estimate on March thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. Um, there's one issue with concrete, whether we want to do regular concrete or exposed aggregate concrete. The exposed aggregate concrete um, would be more costly. So we did authorize the engineer to um, produce a bid that has the regular concrete as a base bid and the exposed aggregate concrete as an alternate. When the bids come in, we'll make a determination of which one is more uh, cost effective for us to do. So if we take the base bid total construction cost, right now, that's estimated to be one million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. This would put the city's share at four hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty dollars for construction. Alternate one with the exposed aggregate concrete, um, projected budget being one million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and five cents. This will put the city's share for construction at six hundred twelve dollars, six hundred, or six hundred twelve thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and five cents. In addition to this, because of supplemental agreement number twelve, we are responsible for, responsible for Cochran's fees. That will not be reimbursed by the grant. So Cochran's fees total two hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars. So if the base bid is accepted, the projected cost to the city would be seven hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, twenty-five cents. If the exposed aggregate concrete bid is accepted, that would be nine hundred nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and five cents. And I forgot to uh, advance the PowerPoint. Nobody told me. Like, nobody said anything. All right, next steps. So as stated, um, staff's recommendation is to proceed with the change in scope. Um, even though it was not authorized, the reason for the tree removal was based on the fact that we would need to do a complete replacement of the sidewalk. As I mentioned, the trees have been removed. So um, based on that, we are recommending that we move forward with the change in scope. Uh, the decision on the exposed aggregate, aggregate versus regular concrete would be made once the bids come in. Uh, the city's portion would be covered from the Capital Improvement Fund and we, uh, city manager is recommending use of the curb and sidewalk funds, which are um, I think we had about nine hundred thousand dollars on that line item. So there, the funds are there to cover um, either bid, assuming that they come in at the numbers that are included at the cost estimate. Um, a couple of other points. So the plans are ready to be submitted to MoDOT. Cochran did estimate that construction would start anywhere from six to eight months after plans are submitted. Um, they anticipate one to two months for MoDOT to review and approve the plans. Uh, one month for the bid process and then one to two months for MoDOT to, to review and approve the bids. Uh, the contractor would need to obtain a bond and then of course, the city council would need to vote to award the bid. So we're anywhere from six to eight months out from construction, assuming that we proceed um, with the, the plan that we have presented. So with that, I can take any questions that you all may have.
Are there questions from members of council? Um, well, mine may be, mine may be more of a statement. I, I would really like to get this matter done. This is one street that I am tired of hearing about, tired of the complaints, and this has taken far too long. I would like to get this matter resolved as quickly as possible. I was under the impression that this was going to be started in construction momentarily after the trees came down. So uh, I don't know about my colleagues from the first ward in particular, but I, I really would like to stop hearing about this street. And so whatever we can do to move this forward, I would ask that the city manager and staff move forward as quickly as possible and find the funds to get this thing done because this, this is, this is taking far too long. Uh, the, the surprises do not probably make any of us happy. I would assume that there's a hitch in, there were some hits in the process. I'm not sure exactly what that was yet. But I think that does beg the question that something was missed, uh, but I also think we have to get this thing done. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Partisan question here. Why do we need exposed aggregate? It's a quarter of a million dollars to have a party. Is that, is that my understanding?
It is uh, definitely more expensive. I think I was uh, given a percentage. It's twenty-five percent more expensive uh, than the regular concrete. Uh, there was a belief that our code required us to do exposed aggregate. Um, at the time, we, we had not located the policy, so we told the contractor to proceed with the base bid and the alternate bid, so as not to hold up the project. Um, since that time, we have learned that we're not required to do the exposed aggregate concrete. So since they've prepared the plan with the base bid and the alternate bid, we're gonna proceed so that we don't delay anything. Now, if by some miracle, it comes in cheaper, so be it. Uh, but uh, the plan would ideally be to go with what is going to be cost effective for us, which would likely be the regular concrete.
My point is save money. Thank you.
But something could change, so you never know.
Mr. Rose, anything else?
Ms. Sharp, I believe that's it. Uh, I had, hearing that is consensus of the mayor and council to move forward with the uh, expanded project. And so our intention will be to submit the plans to MoDOT. We should be able to do that tomorrow since they are ready. Uh, and try to accelerate it as much as we can. Honorable Mayor and council members, this next item, item L three, uh, have a brief presentation from Finance Director Keith Cole regarding the yard waste, yardway sticker buyback program. Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I'm Ramire, members of council. Um, this agenda item before you, it's um, with the passing of bill number ninety-five sixty-four to eliminate the yardway stickers, um, we are uh, recommending the opportunity for residents to return their uh, yardway stickers for a, a credit on their refuse account. If it's less than ninety-nine dollars, which is less than um, sixty-six stickers, the um, for one sticker, it's a dollar fifty uh, per sticker. And so if it's, like, if it's less than, if you have less than sixty-six stickers, then we would then credit your account. And if it's more greater than ninety-nine dollars, then we would issue a refund check. And for businesses, then we would also just uh, refund uh, do a refund check for the businesses. And that's kind of a, the short suite. We just thought that to minimize the amount of checks uh, to process that we would issue the credit. I think that'd be the easiest for, you know, for the residents. And if you have questions, I'd be answer to, here to answer.
Are there questions from members of council? Mr. McMahon?
Will there be a start date and an end date for the program so that we're not?
No.
So anytime someone mails these in, then they have a sticker to support it, they're good?
Correct.
Okay. And that last part on the form where it says businesses that purchase stickers, that was businesses that purchased them for resale?
Correct.
So I, yeah, I don't know if there would be anybody that is a business that bought stickers and were running a business out of their residential. Maybe just to add that in there, that businesses that purchase for resale is treated a little bit different than, than residential. Would just, just to clarify what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Um, is there a reason we can't put a sunset on this? I mean, when you're giving money back, I would tend to think you want to close this item out at some point in time. So I would, I would hate to think that you guys are gonna need to monitor this for too long a period of time.
I mean, we can, but it was just, if, whenever they have their, their stickers, then they would, I'm assuming they would, will pile, have a mass, you know, influx right up front, but then maybe kind of ease out, so.
Um, my, I, I can be totally wrong on this, but my guess is that the number of people who are, will take the time to bring the stickers back is probably not gonna be uh, large. Uh, I, I, out of, out of the population of University City and those people who purchase a sticker. So I, I would recommend that we probably, for your all's sake, put a sunset on this, whether it's at the end of the year or at something, because to me, uh, I, I just, I've, I, I think this is a wonderful thing that the city is doing. It makes sense. I, I get it. It's very fair to all of our citizens, but I also think that they probably will understand if you turn your tickets in by the end of twenty twenty-five or they're gone.
We'll take that into consideration.
It would be our intention to sunset the program at the end of the calendar year. That's acceptable to the. Honorable Mayor and council members, this next item, item L four, uh, asked for considering the inner fund borrowing from general fund to solid waste fund in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Cole?
Yes, um, for this agenda item, um, just due to with the passing of the, the new rates and so for currently for the operations, um, to help out solid waste fund, uh, we're requesting for a loan amount of two hundred thousand over a five-year period at interest rate of one point two-five percent. And um, hopefully the solid waste fund will be able to pay it off sooner. But that's, we're recommending just a short five-year loan, kind of help out for the current operations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions of the city manager, Mr. Cole? Hearing that, is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Fuller, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon, is there discussion? Mr. Smotherson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Crowe. Just a quick one into that, in that, the item number five, is that a different subject? If, that's different, okay. And that's all I wanted to.
Any other questions? Hearing that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Rose?
Honorable Mayor and council members, this next item, item L five, ask that you consider a transfer of funds to the central garage fleet. Mr. Cole?
Yes, this agenda item is recommending a fund transfer from the general fund uh, to the internal service fund, fleet maintenance in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. This would just be a, a fund transfer. It's to help, again, this has helped to um, offset some of the current operations that, that fund is experiencing. It's to help, again, this has helped to, um, offset some of the current operations that, that fund is experiencing.
Are there questions of Mr. Cole or the city manager? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Teeman. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. I will now move forward to, uh, new business, bill number ninety-five sixty-six. Who would like to introduce? Mr. Smothers would like to introduce, uh, Madam Clerk. May we have the first reading?
Bill nine five six six, an ordinance amending section four hundred point zero seven zero of the municipal code of the city of University City, Missouri, relating to the official zoning map by amending said map so as to change the classification of property known as adjusted lots one and three of marketed olive plat seven from industrial commercial district to planned development commercial district.
Thank you very much. We now have before us bill number ninety-five sixty-seven. Who would like to introduce? Mr. Smothersen. Madam Clerk, may we have the first reading?
Bill nine five six seven, an ordinance approving a final development plan for adjusted lots two and three of marketed olive plat seven.
Thank you very much. That concludes the new business for this evening. We'll now move to council reports of business. Are there any reports from members of council? Hearing none. Uh, Madam, uh, Mr. Smothersen, do you have a?
Yes, sir. Under this subject, um, one of the things that I wanted to say is that I wanted to ask and, and let David Hutkins know if he needs suggestions for that open slot in marketed olive, I, you know, we can, we can offer some suggestions if that's okay. So it's, you can call me and I, there you go. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. But the other thing that I wanted to say also is that, and I have spoken with Ms., um, our, our city clerk. Um, I'm not sure that that city council email is working, and I know, I know about my colleagues, but I could not find that April second, uh, adjustment of Seven Brew and that ribbon cutting. I didn't see that email at all, and I'm just wondering if the, if my other colleagues received that. So I just wanted to make sure that email address is working, if we have all of us under that, because I couldn't find that email address. And.
Well, I, I was going to say, I think that the, 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 the change that happens with Seven Brew and it did with, um, Ben and Jerry's and the loop is that those were not done by the businesses. They were done by the West County Chamber of Commerce. And we probably have to find a way to get a different loop going from the West County Chamber because it's, because Seven Brew and Ben and Jerry's did not do the ribbon cutting. It was the, it was this, it was the West County Chamber of which some businesses belong, but most do not. So, Ms. Reese, Ms. Reese, I'm not sure what we need to do, or maybe the communications person can make outreach, uh, Mr. Rose, to the West County Chamber. And that way they would have a person because otherwise it, it is, it is hit or miss, clearly, as you and I both know.
Right. Okay. And, uh, and I appreciate that's getting that straightened out. Uh, I wanted to ask the city manager, if there is a tree replacement program, do we still have that in place?
Honorable Mayor, I'm here pro tem Smothersen, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, the last thing I wanted to say, and as she left for, before I could actually say this, and I wanted to actually thank Diane Jackson for being here tonight. I appreciate her, um, her thanking the council for the job that was done. But one of the things that I actually wanted to thank her for is actually showing up at the council meeting, because I think that that's very important, that, um, that they be seen and heard in front of this council. So I just wanted to appreciate her for being, for being, being willing to bring that issue to the council. And, uh, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Reese, do we have any other requests to speak from citizens?
No, there are none at this time.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, council comments this evening for my colleagues? Mr. Teeman.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, as many of you know, I, uh, used to live and work in Mexico City. Therefore, I am mindful that before our next meeting, we will celebrate Cinco de Mayo. In honor of our Mexican-American neighbors, who I hope will forgive my terrible accent, I offer these brief words in Spanish and then in English. Honorable Alcalde, miembros de consejo, el cinco de mayo es una celebración que en muchos sentidos es peculiar de los Estados Unidos, los Estados Unidos. Es una celebración dedicada a la cultura de nuestros hermanos y hermanas mexicanoamericanos. Por lo tanto, nos unimos a nuestros vecinos para decir viva México. Vivan los hijos e hijas de esa hermosa nación. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Cinco de Mayo is a celebration that in many ways is peculiar to the United States. It is a celebration dedicated to the culture of our Mexican-American brothers and sisters. Therefore, we join with our neighbors in saying, long live Mexico, long live the sons and daughters of that beautiful nation.
Any other council comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.